Hello, good evening, everybody. I see that folks are trickling into our webinar. As they come in, I want to thank everyone for joining this evening. We have some information to share with you tonight regarding the ballot measures that will be facing River Park voters for the November 2024 election. And so as people are trickling in, I'll just start with some very simple introductions. My name is Gabe Turan, the city council member for District Two, which includes River Park and starts at the South Bend by Fifth Street, near the Old Oxford High School campus park and extends north all the way up to and including River Park. This border generally on the east by Oxford Boulevard and the west by Ventura Road. So I do want to again, thank everyone for taking the time to be here this evening to see our presentation. We are here to give you factual information about the upcoming measures, measures I, J, K, and L that will be facing River Park voters. And the purpose for this evening is to do just that. Give out information to the residents of River Park and to the community. And folks can take that information and use it in their consideration as they have their ballots. We will be joined this evening by a couple of main presenters. First, we just in no particular order, we have Mr. Alex Nguyen, our city manager, who will be speaking on a portion of the presentation you'll see this evening. We have our special districts manager, Mr. Anthony Miller, who will be joining us as well. And then we have a portion of presentation from Chief Jason Benitez, who will speak on his portion regarding Oxford PD and their their components that are part of the River Park CFD as well. Before we get started, I would like to just share that for those of you who are not familiar with the Zoom webinar system, on this platform, you have the ability to use the Q and A function. We have a number of questions that were pre-submitted by residents prior to this meeting. And we will be having, we have those ready to go after the presentation. I do ask that folks hang on to their questions if they can until the end of the presentations, because it may be answered by the presentation itself. But you're welcome to click on the Q and A button that you see there on your screen. And that will allow you to ask a question and it'll get queued up in the in the function that we have here. And just know that if we due to time, don't get to every single question, we will be following up with responses to the questions that we have that are relevant to tonight's topic of CFD five and the ballot measures. All right, so with that, another quick rundown here, as you can see on the title slide here, we are going to be going over the River Park CFD services and funding. We'll touch on the ballot measures themselves and specifically what they do. Then we'll talk about some of the impacts of JK and L or potential impacts that you would see. We'll hear directly from the police chief from Oxnard Police Department and how the measures pertain specifically to the work that they do within CFD five. And then at the end, we will have a portion of Q and A questions and answers with our panelists. We also have a number of other staff here tonight who will be assisting if there is any kind of question that falls more within their wheelhouse. And so we will introduce them and recognize them when we get to that portion. All right, so to start, I believe I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anthony Miller. Oh, excuse me, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager first, who's going to give us some initial. So I'll give it to Alex.
Thank you, council member. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to view this with us live and then to anyone who's watching after the fact, thank you for taking the time. So just by way of a few introductory remarks, I just want to remind everyone that River Park is a Melrose neighborhood. And when you decided to invest in this neighborhood, that certainly should have been, if it wasn't, but I believe it was disclosed to you in your real estate paperwork. So everyone who chose to live here knew going in that you have a special tax assessed to your property. And under California law, the Melrose Act allows for builders and cities to come up with a funding structure to build by master plan neighborhood like this. There would be no River Park neighborhood or no sea bridge or no wagon wheel for that matter without the CFD. And there would be, for example, people, there've been a lot of questions about the parks. There'd be no, not only would there not be the neighborhood, there wouldn't be the parks. And the Melrose was set up not just to build the neighborhood, but to also maintain your amenities such as your parks. So I just want to be clear about that, because there's also been, you know, as these measures have been touted around as choices, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, been these narratives about everyone being double taxed and that you should be getting the so-called general property tax portion for services, and that's also false. And we'll share the information about that as part of this presentation. So I'll come back to those items later. Thank you. Anthony, you can take over.
I hit my microphone and it didn't come off mute. This slide here you see is is just an overview of special districts within the city of Oxnard. So River Park is CFD five. It's the purple area up in the north end of the city. And as you could see, the city has a large total number of districts. River Park is not alone in being a special district, but it is our largest district. It's actually our largest, both in physical size and in overall capacity of services. Next slide. These services that I was referring to are funded directly through CFD five. These items that you see on your screen here are a part of your budget that the CFD special tax funds. Each individual item listed here calls out a specific item that the CFD's authorized services and improvements are represented by. So for example, your landscape maintenance, that includes areas within your park spaces, areas within your medians, your trails, things along those lines. Those all are maintained at a relatively high standard. And they are specifically funded by the special tax. The other sections of the CFD that aren't necessarily as immediately apparent are things like your storm drain system. Your storm drain system is underneath the sidewalks and streets in some spots. That is a component that's specifically funded by the CFD as it was an identified portion of the CFD when it was created. These items are all discussed during the budget creation process that my my team and I usually bring to the community sometime around January, February, early in the year, typically through the neighborhood council to have discussions regarding what levels of service the community wants to see, what how things are generally going to cost, particularly in regards to supplies or or maintenance cycles, things along those lines. If there's a portion of the community that would like to see higher levels of service on certain areas, we encourage the entire community to come to those meetings and to have that discussion. Because that is where we are able to create this budget and kind of be responsive directly to the requests and needs of the community. I'll use one example for this last year, there was a request through the neighborhood council for an increase in the police services budget. We were able to make that work and and put that into the budget for this fiscal year. Next slide, please. And Alex, I think this is back to you.
Actually, Anthony, you could talk about this.
Okay, so a little a little bit more about how your your general fund and your and your special tax works. To speak a little bit to the items, the difference between your general fund tax dollars and your special tax dollars. Your special tax dollars, 100% of those dollars go specifically to the services that are identified within the Melrose District's authorized services and improvements. Your property tax that are dollars that go to the general fund, it's approximately 17% of what you pay in your general property tax bill. That portion of your property tax goes to spread or spread is spread out across all of these particular items. So your public safety component, basically the entire, you know, the entire police budget for the city is funded through the general fund. And that serves the River Park area. Whether or not the CFD funds the supplemental services is a question that we get to answer through the budget process with the CFD. If the CFD chooses not to fund supplemental police services, there will still be a police presence in River Park. There will not be extra shifts. However, for example, there are lots of other departments within the city that the general fund covers that serve River Park. Your Public Works Department performs your street striping, your sidewalk repairs. Recreation and Community Service provides all of the staffing and programming in the Rio Vista Gym and the scheduling of the of the Rio Vista and Del Mar baseball and softball fields. The Housing Department provides services for homelessness, which are, I know are is a topic of great concern within River Park due to homeless population trans- transiting through the neighborhood. The General Fund does provide services to to individuals that may be coming in that through the neighborhood and hopefully are are cared for in such a way that they don't have to return to the River Park neighborhood. Other items that are listed on here, for example, your community enforcement code enforcement, things along, or sorry, community development code enforcement. All of those items are items that are picked up by the general fund. And next slide, unless Alex would like to add anything? So to go a little bit more over the applied tax rate versus your maximum tax rate. This is effectively a math problem. The maximum tax rate is the rate that was set when the CFD was formed. And then during each, every fiscal year, each and every fiscal year after that point, there is a CI, sorry, excuse me, not CIP, there is a CPI inflator applied to it between two and 5%. That is the overall maximum that can be assessed in a given year. However, as you can see, that actually has never happened. The city has never assessed at maximum due to a number of reasons, you know, budgetary primarily. But what's something I'd like to drink, you know, to bring attention to is that if a CFD is carrying a reserve balance, meaning there's funds in the bank that the CFD then can use to lower the overall assessment or special tax for the community. We attempt to apply that when when we can. So for the last few fiscal years, for example, fiscal year 21, 22 through 24, 25, the city has applied a levy credit, essentially applying reserve funds to your levy credit to lower the overall applied tax. In each of those fiscal years, as you can see by the green line, that is what the applied tax during those years would have been to be necessary to meet that the budget need. Now, you can see in fiscal year 24, 25, those those numbers are quite close because right now we are anticipating that in the next upcoming few years, there will be CIP expenses within the neighborhood and using your reserve funds to to provide a break to the applied tax versus saving for the future is something that we try to balance. And that is what what is the difference there between your green and your blue line. Next slide, please. Those CIP projects, just to get into a little bit more detail here, they're here listed, they're part of this, the approved, the city's approved CIP book. You can find that on the city's website. We are listed within a special fund, so it's Fund 120, that is our special districts fund. And each one of these projects is funded specifically through the special tax, because these items are specifically within River Park. These items are primarily playgrounds. Each one of the playgrounds in River Park is a bit approximately 15 years old, thereabouts. And 15, 15 years old is about is about the useful lifespan of a of a playground. And that's when we try to aim to to replace them. As this is a special, a special district, we have the opportunity to put these items within our CIP and keep them on schedule. And they don't have to compete with other parks within the city that we are only competing here within our own district. So the special tax does give us a great deal of flexibility when it comes to budgeting. I do want to point out that these items are budgets, they are estimates. And the good thing about having the ability to be flexible with this is that if we want to push out a playground a year because that burden is too high within a fiscal year to 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 discuss, we can do that. We can push it out a fiscal year if we if we desire or if the community desires. And we we can talk those things over through our neighborhood council. And the community can have direct input on these items. And as you can see here, the schedule is all quite a few, oh, kind of few, excuse me, it's a few years out to allow for to spread out these costs over a certain number of years. Next slide.
And before we move on, Anthony, just real quickly, maybe you can elaborate just a little bit, just when we talk about capital improvements, as you just talked about, and as we see on the slide here, in a city, when we have capital improvements, capital expenses, these are large purchases that we're going to be making. And I I liken that to personal, our personal budgets where it's, you know, I know I'm going to need to buy a new refrigerator. If I start saving now, next year I can I can get that. Or, you know, I know that my car is on its last leg, I'm going to need to save now to get one, maybe next year or two years from now, if I come up with this plan to do so. Would you say that that's similar to what we have here when we talk about large costs or expenses in our in our capital improvement program?
That that's correct. In fact, that would actually be a very appropriate analogy is that capital projects in general, I don't remember what our threshold is, I think it's $150,000. These are items that would, they would represent a large impact to your budget if you were to attempt to budget them within an operational capacity. So I will use the transportation and drainage project down there on the bottom right. That million dollars is an estimate. However, the district, if it had the capacity, it technically, we could apply that within the operations budget. But it makes a lot more sense to say, let's put $250,000 into the reserves every year for four years before taking that project on. In that way, you're not seeing massive swings in your assessments every year.
All right, back to me for a moment. So in November, River Park residents and only River Park residents will see these four measures on your election ballot. So there is the three measures initiated by Aaron Starr, JK and L, and then the city's measure I in response to that. So let me go over these very quickly. Next slide, please. All right, so the city's measure is essentially keeping everything the same, meaning keep what you have and keep every year working with Anthony and his staff to just make choices on your budget and the services that you want inside River Park. So there's no new tax here, there's certainly no increase in a tax. And in fact, you can go to the next slide. There's a few items that we're actually removing permanently. And you can see those on the right hand side here under the yellow highlight. So specific CFD, and and these are items that in the formation documents of your Melrose, these items were provided as allowable expenditure. So we have now, we are now, if you approve measure I, permanently removing, having the CFD fund the items highlighted, rec programs and library services, maintenance of museums and cultural facilities, fire protection and suppression services, which we've actually removed a few years ago, but this would make it permanent unless in some future iteration, the residents of River Park vote to put it back as well as ambulance and paramedic services. Next slide. So for the three measures, the key thing is, and again, as a reminder, we can't go into detail on everything tonight, but please, 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 we encourage everyone to read everything as you're making your decisions and choices on how you vote. So measure J essentially repeals the special tax for your River Park neighborhood. Measure K is a reduction of the maximum special taxes that can be imposed. And then measure L sets limitations on the uses of your special tax. Next slide. All right. And then in addition to all this, the city council recently adopted an ordinance which basically says that the city's general fund will not subsidize any of the city's special districts. We've already talked about this a few times, but as a reminder, your neighborhood, similar to a handful of of other neighborhoods that you saw on that prior map, elected to have in order to be built, to be constructed, elected to finance their own amenities. So one example we used was if, for, for example, your neighbors across the highway at Wagon Wheel, if they were to, in the near future, vote to defund their CFD tax, we would not be able to take your CFD taxes from River Park and subsidize Wagon Wheel. So the same principle holds for the rest of the city. You remember that map that we showed earlier? There are a handful of special district neighborhoods around the city, but the the majority of the city doesn't have these special taxes for added amenities to their neighborhoods. So the council has passed the ordinance again stating that the general fund will continue, of course, to provide general fund services throughout the city, but not to subsidize any special district that elects to defund itself. Next slide. So lots of discussion about what does this mean, what happens, because there's been again, this narrative that, oh, you can defund it, don't worry, because the the general fund can take care of it. So I just want to be very clear and very blunt, that will not happen. So we we shared with you earlier, the the general fund services that are provided, not only throughout the city, but also in River Park. And that stays the same, but all of these services that your CFD, that your special tax provides to to keep Riverside, I mean Riverside, sorry, River Park in the nice condition that it's in will go away. And again, it's, it's, I know people want to have this, are trying to understand, well, how bad will it be? Can we do away with all of it and still keep it the same? Can we do away with half of it? And what does it mean to look half as good or or half worse? I understand the the impetus to have to go through that that mental exercise, but it's kind of like, you know, you know, if you prune a tree, but you're you're not in arbor, so you're just going to start pruning it. You start wondering how much can I prune it to look the way I want before I kill it? So I just want to make it easy for you. This this slide makes it clear. These are all the the amenities that you currently receive based on the community that participates each year to make this budget for your neighborhood, your community members, your neighbors. If if it gets defunded, these services will not happen. So I'll give you another example. Because we, because we tried to be be comprehensive in our responses to say, you know, their health and safety issues, of course, will take care of it. So and and people are stretching that to say, well, that that means they'll mow the lawn. No, it doesn't. So here's a very, very easy example. If there's a big tree in one of your parks that falls sick and looks like it might fall over and cause harm, we would take care of it. Right? Or if it gets struck by lightning and half of it is, looks like it's going to fall over in a week, we take care of it. But if a water sprinkler breaks and and fails to water the the grass, we're not fixing that. Again, because the Melrose was set up not only to build the neighborhood and to build the parks, but to also maintain it. So I just want to be very clear about that. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's the other thing to make all of you aware of. So the three measures offered by Mr. Starr as good choices for you. Again, I hope we've, we've made it clear for everyone that they're not good choices, but even more so, they are actually linked, and this is very cleverly written out in the language. So it's so it's not, it's not as if you're just choosing for the one you really want. Again, because in the actual language, they are linked to the effect that if if they should all meet the 50% plus one threshold. But here, here is a hypothetical here. If most of the residents who vote decide on measure L to limit the tax, but if the others pass at a lower vote count, but measure J, the one that repeals it completely, gets across the the initial threshold, it would actually be the prevailing measure. So again, if the majority of you should vote for measure L to limit it, thinking it won't be so bad, but I'm telling you, it will be so bad. But measure J gets just just over the 50% mark. It actually would be the prevailing measure, and that's what would go into effect. So I just want to make that clear for you that these these measures are not as 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 they are being presented as you have three choices, right? Choose A, B, or C. No, they are linked. And that to me, that's also, well, let me just say it again, it's very clever. Okay, next slide. All right, council member, this is back to you.
Yes, thank you. And this is just a really quick overview. This was something that had been requested by residents in looking at the CFD and how folks' property tax bills actually look. And homeowners who are on right now, who are here to learn this information, I'm sure this looks familiar to you. What we want to clarify for folks is there's a lot of line items on here, of course. And, you know, you see that we have the minimum 1% tax that is Prop 13, that everybody who owns a home would see. And River Park specifically, you can see that you have a number of school bonds for the Rio School District. There is a high school, a couple of high school bonds, Ventura County Community College District. And you could see we have just a number of things here. This yellow highlight that you see here, this single line item in this example tax bill, this is what we're talking about to me. And this is what is affected one way or the other by measures that we're giving you information on. And so all of these other ones will still stand regardless of the outcome of the election regarding CFD five. And so I just want that to be clear for folks that none of these other things are at potential for being adjusted in any way by these ballot measures. It is solely this yellow highlight here, a single line item on your property tax bill. And along those lines as well, the math on it for looking at the average property tax bill. If voters chose to go with measure J, or as the city manager just showed all slides ago, if measure J crossed the 50% plus one threshold, no matter what the other voter said, that one has the the highest tax cut. And so that based on the ballot language, that one would be the prevailing measure. Well, if that were to pass, it would reduce property taxes by about 17, 17.8% or would amount to a savings of about $150 a month per folks. Again, that's just the financial effect, the math we're looking at when we look at just that yellow line, just the CFD five portion of the property tax bill. So we just wanted to have that portion available for you to have that context as well. So with this next slide, I am going to pass it over to our chief of police, Mr. Jason Benitez.
Thank you, council member Turan. With this next set of slides, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the police services there provided under the enhanced police services portion that your Melrose pays for. But in order to do this, I want to show you another larger picture about what you get between that and the general fund. If we start with the next slide. So starting, I want to kind of start at the top and work my way down towards the neighborhood. So it's under our department's structure, which is in three bureaus. Our police department has 11 police patrol beats in the city. Now, these services are provided by the general fund. 10 out of the 11 of these beats are your typical or conventional police beats that operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We will get into it with a little more detail soon, but I'd like to point out that CFD five is part of what we call Beat 14, and you can see that at the top of the map. Another thing that is in our environment is that police officer vacancies are a widespread challenge. And it's not just Oxnard, but it's across the state, even across the country. The Oxnard Police Department has a very significant and persistent number of sworn officer vacancies. We currently have 22. That number fluctuates, but it's been about that for the past several years. So this So this number twenty-two also does not include those officers that are uh in training. They are out on injury or on some type of leave, whether it's military leave or family leave. So what happens is the patrol division, uh, our first responders, that carries the brunt of the impacts from the vacancies. So we have to shift and adjust to continue to deliver those services to the public. And because of this, we are at a place where we have been for about two years, where we have actually officers from specialty assignments, detectives, our traffic unit. Um, these officers are actually spending a number of their month working patrol shifts to help hold the line. So I'll speak to this later, but having a vacancy rate such as this uh runs against creating an allocated full-time position to provide the police services uh just for CFD five. So um it's one reason why staffing enhanced police services with overtime is more practical. And I'll speak to that a little bit more if we could go to the next slide, please. Now, talking about our general patrol services that we provide. Now, there are three shifts of patrol officers that we put out every day. And for the purpose of this conversation, I will refer to these shifts as again standard or core patrol shifts. Each of these shifts and each of these beats usually has one officer assigned to each beat per shift. Now occasionally, there may be more, so one or two of the beats might get a second officer, but for the most part, it's one officer per shift per beat. Now, these are the services that are provided by the general fund, including the officers that work beat fourteen on these three shifts. So that's important to note. The officers uh from these shifts, they provide some level of relief to each other, such as for meal breaks. Typically, a meal break or report writing time is not approved until an officer from the next shift comes on. So very important to point out that the units, the police units from these three shifts, they have to cover everywhere in their beat. And it's also important to point out that all of these beat cars are subject to being sent to other beats when needed. So if it gets busy in another part of town, they could very well be moved over to that, and that's typical. But conversely, when it gets busy uh in beat fourteen, units from other beats are also uh there to assist as needed. So let's go up to the next slide, please. Each of the patrol beats that we have have has what we call a beat coordinator. And this includes beat fourteen, which is includes the River Park neighborhood. The beat coordinator is part of our department's neighborhood policing team. And what you see here are their general responsibilities to identify community safety issues, engage our residents, direct problem solving efforts, and this is important. And your beat fourteen coordinator, who is a police corporal, so you see the two chevrons there are there um the insignia that they wear. The corporal's office is located at the collection storefront on Seaglass Way. This also is paid for by the general fund. And if any of you have been to the River Park meetings, um, Jack Martin is your beat coordinator, and his contact information is right there. Next slide, please. Looking at beat fourteen, so take a closer look at this of the ten police beats that operate twenty-four seven. The numbers you see here are based on uh last year, twenty twenty-three statistics, but beat fourteen accounts for about twelve percent of all the police calls for service. This number reflects what we call priority three calls and above. So basically, those calls from the public that uh somebody calls in and requests that an officer or somebody from the police department responds to. Very important to point out here to our public is that uh River Park is not the only neighborhood in beat fourteen. As you can see here, there are also five other neighborhoods within the beat, as well as two uh art shopping centers. So it is also important to point out here that of the units that you see from these these three shifts, which were paid for by the general fund, they have to cover these areas as well. So beat fourteen is no exception. Next slide, please. Go to the, let's go to the next slide, please. So uh this here is a a uh we call a heat map. This slide depicts uh essentially a one-month sample of police calls for service within beat fourteen. This heat map, um, so the warmer colors you see have more calls for service. Now, you see that the area is just outside of the collection. You see that there is some density there. That also reflects seven apartment complexes, which add to the concentration of calls for service. There are more people concentrated in that particular area. The main takeaway from this slide is that there are other areas in beat fourteen that have service needs that compete with um River Park and the collection area. So the River Park and the collection area are just part of beat fourteen. So keeping that in mind, the beat fourteen patrol cars that that are provided by the general fund, they go back and forth. And so they will, at times, uh, they will leave River Park without a police officer in it. So this is an example of what the beat fourteen officers must handle. Um, it gives you a very a good idea. I'll get to this shortly, but um when I speak more about the enhanced policing services that place additional resources and keep them in uh River Park and the the CFD. And so keeping them essentially north of the one-on-one freeway. We could please uh go to the next slide. So earlier, I I just showed you a map, uh, the heat map for this past uh July. So of note, you can see the uh higher density areas are not just the collection, but also adjacent. But you can see here is that during this this one year within CFD five, sixty-four percent of the calls for service uh in that Melrose zone were in the River Park neighborhood, and just about one-third were over in the uh collection. And as I mentioned a couple of slides ago, I mentioned that there were uh nine thousand one hundred and seventy-five calls for service in beat fourteen. So let's take, let's break that down a little bit. Given the number of calls of for service that we have in CFD five, it can be said that these make up for about thirty percent of the calls within the beat. And given that, it's not unreasonable to say that general funded patrol officers could spend the seventy, the uh corollary seventy percent of their time outside of CFD five. Next slide, please. People have asked uh how uh River Park compares in terms of reported crime. And so what we have here is a density map. And in this density map, it includes reported crime statistics that were taken for the calendar year twenty twenty-three using the National Incident Based Reporting System. It's been broken down by each of Oxnard's neighborhoods. River Park at this time is a, I will, we'll just say it is an average neighborhood in our city in terms of reported crime. Couple of things to consider when you look at this map, you just can compare River Park and you look at other portions of the city to see how the concentrations flesh out. So there are a lot of other areas that have more calls for service or more crimes in their neighborhoods. And also you see the collection and the esplanade, shopping centers, they are higher concentration of reported crimes. But that it's natural, it's a natural occurring effect as these are larger retail centers with more people. Uh, next slide, please. So these are the top ten call types last year, specifically in the River Park neighborhood. And when you look at these, subjects disturbing is one of the most common call types that we do get uh at the police department across the city. But this gives you an idea of what people are calling in for from that neighborhood. This chart, as I mentioned, excludes the collection. So let's go to the next slide, and I'll give you a uh a picture of what it looks like between the collection and the River Park neighborhood that's within your Melrose district. So this shows the top ten call types in all of CFD five. And so for the most part, uh, you could say that the nature of the these types of top ten calls are are considered relatively lower level ones. There are some in there that are serious, but in general, these are, these are um definitely what I've said, a a different set of call types than we find in other types of parts of the city. Go to our next slide, please. And I want to spend some time about the enhanced police services that are provided uh to the Melrose area, to River Park um in CFD five. These services are intended to add to the existing core patrol services, the ones that are provided by the city's general fund. They are an additional resource on top of those beat cars. And for this current fiscal year, the Melrose has allocated three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for additional police presence, presence in CFD five. So as um Anthony mentioned earlier, this is an increase from the previous fiscal year when residents expressed that they wanted more police presence in their area. So overall, if you take a look back at this, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, the enhanced police services is approximately seven point one percent of the total operating budget for CFD five. We currently are deploying one to two police officers during evening shift hours on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. They're either one or two officers in a car, or we may run two uh one officer cars. Now, these shifts and this deployment times, they are in line with a typical increase in calls for service that we see during the summer months. The beat coordinator, Corporal Martin in this case, uh identifies the optimal times and dates, and officers sign up for overtime shifts. Now, these added shifts are placed mainly to address call for service trends, but also to particular problems that arise, and they do at various times throughout the week. Once an officer signs up for overtime, the officers receive instruction as to how to spend their time and effort. And these officers actually report back to Corporal Martin uh as as to what they did during that time. So there is some accountability there. And which brings us to the topic of overtime. Since its inception, the enhanced police services element in the Melrose district has been operated on an overtime basis. And people have asked why these shifts are on an overtime bas- basis. Some have kind of brought this up, questioning the legitimacy of this deployment. But let me point out to the public here, why overtime versus uh a a straight time, uh full-time equivalent officer working the area? So having overtime, it actually provides greater flexibility. And by doing so, you're not confining yourself to a a forty-hour block somewhere on the calendar during the work week. And so if if you have that, you kind of paint yourself into a corner as to how you can change shifts as the problems change. These overtime hours, they can be spread wide across the calendar and at various shift times. And with overtime, if we need to, we can actually place multiple officers onto a shift or a special enforcement detail as needed versus having one officer who's confined to regular time. And so as the demands change or new problems arise in that area, overtime can be posted to better adjust and place those problem solving resources. And one other point about the uh having a straight time officer allocated to uh this this endeavor versus placing on overtime is that when we bill the overtime, we are not billing other add-ons such as benefits, such as purse costs or other benefits that go with the officer. In typical agreements for cost recovery for straight time forty-hour positions, we charge uh a salary and benefits. So if we go to the next slide, these are some of the, um, these are a a summary of the general expectations that are asked of the officers that sign up for the uh enhanced police services detail. So they receive these written instructions and that uh they're also instructed to not routinely respond to areas outside of CFD five. There have been some instances uh uh a note where they have been called out of CFD five, say like into the Wagon Wheel neighborhood or to the Esplanade for an emergency. But that's generally not something that we we uh we we want to keep that to an absolute minimum. And so as I mentioned, uh, the officers are uh instructed to also log their activity at the end of their shift. Let's go to the next slide, please. So I've seen uh questions have come up from members of our community about what is it the officers on this detail are actually doing? And so um unlike the earlier slides, which showed the types of calls that they were summoned to or responded to, this one kind of provides uh some more insight about their self-initiated efforts. So in this chart, you can see that during the um during the fiscal year of twenty-three to twenty-four, the officers working the overtime detail handled five hundred and sixty-five incidents that were in the CFD. And this ref- reflects responses to calls as well as self-initiated activity. So in this chart, you see four of the top ten include traffic stop, subject stop, parking violation, and foot patrol. These are all viewed in terms of proactive efforts or responding to complaints from residents and particularly, particularly traffic stops and parking violations. And having the ability to have proactive efforts, it definitely lends towards crime deterrence as well as problem solving activities. Next slide, please. So people have asked about what we could reasonably expect to change if uh voters eliminate CFD five's uh funding, which includes the enhanced police services and and I definitely don't want to be accused of fear mongering, and this is not the case. This is simply just what we can expect. I'm not here saying anything about where I think crime would go, but this is what will happen in terms of the police department. There will be a decreased police presence in the in River Park, and there'll be decreased proactive efforts, like I mentioned, the uh parking issues, the traffic issues, the foot patrols, um those types of activities. Having less officers in that area available to respond to calls and also given the fact that I had mentioned that the beat fourteen call cars do respond outside of the River Park area, they and they go to other neighborhoods in the beat and other beats in the city. They also compete for calls for service um as that would be going to uh the River Park neighborhood. So the police storefront, which is on Seaglass Way in the collection, would close. And because of that, your beat coordinator's office would close. The beat coordinator would no longer have a a place there to base uh his operation. Um, but what's important to point out is that officers, when they take breaks in their beats, they usually go to a place such as a storefront. Not having the storefront to to take breaks or to do their report writing, they would be more inclined to go to places such as the police station, which is about three miles away. Having all this, uh, less presence in the beat, less availability, what this can reasonably lead to are longer response times in that neighborhood. It'll it'll result for that for pretty much uh anybody in beat fourteen, but um River Park and CFD five are not going to be exempt from increases in response times. And on the terms of having less resources there able to engage in problem solving activities, neighborhood problem solving, um implementing proactive strategies, there's less community policing and problem solving taking place in your neighborhood. That means so, for example, when there is a package theft problem or a particular issue, we would have less capacity to uh post overtime or to engage special directed details to address those things. And also, um, one I mentioned here is decreased crime prevention through environmental design. It's it's a, it's a way that we believe um helps keep crime down. If the environment, the physical environment actually can uh help deter crime, um, we have heard at some other meetings that if things change, like say, for example, the lighting is not in good repair or trees have overgrown lighting tend, those things tend to actually um si- situations like that tend to not deter crime. So there would be less of that taking place. Part of what your beat coordinator does and our your beat team, the neighborhood policing team does, is they look for things like this. And when they see it, they usually try to work on a solution to uh to get that fixed or addressed. So that's basically it. Um, again, these are just some anticipated effects. And with that, I will go ahead and turn over the presentation. This concludes my my portion for now.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. And um with that, we have all of the foundational slides that uh we prepared for this presentation. Uh, we have some pre-submitted questions and answers that we'll be going to. I see some questions have come in. We have added that to the queue of items that we'll be addressing. Uh, again, if we, because of time, don't get to every question, or if there are questions that are uh comprehensive and need us to look at a little bit more data to get to you, know that the questions tonight that are um relevant to tonight's discussion for CFD five and the ballot initiatives, we will follow up with responses to those. And um one of the questions is, will we be posting these slides uh for further review? Absolutely. And one of the questions is, will we be posting these slides for further review? Absolutely. And I will work with the city manager's office. I believe you can find a spot on our website that's easily accessible for folks to view. Not only the slides, the responses to the questions, but also this video is. All right. So for the time being, I'm going to start sharing my screen. If we need to refer back to any of the slides from our presenters, please feel free to let me know and we can get that up. So looking at our questions here, we have a number of questions that again were pre-submitted and then some that have come in so far this evening. I'll just let you know that there are a couple of themes or common areas that have a focus for these questions. They, the largest of which is the impact of the measures. So we will touch on those first, followed by some questions around special districts operations, then our police operations, and then any other questions that come in from there. Okay, so the first question on here, and I believe that either Mr. Miller or Mr. Nguyen can take these. So the first question is yes or no, will our parks see less maintenance if any of the three defunding measures are passed? And I know that this was touched on actually pretty clearly during the presentation. But I hope that this is something that we can just reiterate. So folks are, folks feel clear on what maintenance for their parks in River Park will look like. Given the discussions we've had this evening. So I'll turn it over to either Anthony or Hallit.
I'll jump in and start. So the short answer is yes. If you reduce or eliminate the funding, the services will absolutely either be reduced or eliminated.
All right. Thank you. The next question, if these measures pass, will we be able to keep things that are working well and only get rid of the stuff that isn't working well? I believe the next of that question is, do the measures allow you, if they were to pass either JKRL? Do they allow you to pick and choose what gets eliminated, what gets reduced or limited? And get rid of things that you don't want to keep anymore?
Similar answer, spit, well, certainly if the the one that repeals the the special tax altogether, then then that means go to zero. If one of the other ones should be selected, and I'll have Anthony or someone else from public works chime in. I think there'd be some sort of a process to pick and choose. But the idea that can you keep the things that are working well? Well, first of all, the neighborhood would would be part of determining what that, where those things are. But let's just say there are ten of those, or however many was on on Anthony's chart, you certainly couldn't keep all of them. Again, so depending on which which measure the the voter selects, that would determine the extent of of how severe the reductions would be. But to be clear again, if the one that we that is stated to take the special tax to zero to repeal it, then that equates to zero services that you were currently receiving from the CFD. I don't know if anyone in public works wants to add to that.
I can step in just a little bit with the other two ballot measures. And it's, it's really difficult to say by and large, the amount of reduction in funding that both of the K and L would impose would likely require the CFD to readjust its entire priorities in terms to, it would be a very different discussion come come budget time, I will say that. If in 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 conjunction with, let's see the ordinance number here, ordinance three zero four seven. In conjunction with ordinance three fours or three zero four seven, the CFD would have to fund its improvements through reduced budgets. I can confidently say that it would not be able to maintain the same standard of maintenance or the same standard of of funding for all of those items. And with this ordinance in place, this, the general fund would likely not step in, well, not would likely, it would not step in to increase the funding levels to maintain those same levels of service.
Thank you, Anthony. And one thing that I can add, and the police chief can elaborate if he'd like to. But one thing that I think the voters here need to keep in mind or the attendees tonight is when we have ballot measures, the California constitution is clear that the voter's voice is the highest voice in the land. What they say is written in stone and only they can change it. Legislators can't change it after the fact. Neighborhood councils can't change it. I'll use one of the measures as an example where it actually says you can no longer use police overtime in order to use to have the enhanced police services. And so if that's the case, the chief just stated why having a straight time officer is not practical or able to be done in the current staffing situation for police. So if the ballot measure, if the voters approve that ballot measure, but the ballot measure says you must use straight time, but the city cannot use straight time because they cannot put an officer to fulfill that requirement of the ballot measure, then chief, correct me if I wrong, it may be that they just can't do the enhanced service because they're not allowed to use overtime anymore. But they also practically structurally cannot place a full-time officer there. Is that correct?
That's exactly correct. It eliminates our options, which is not something that I would see as favorable. But to your point, when I spoke to the number of vacancies and things like that, having to actually move somebody over to that River Park on that straight time basis essentially takes away from all the rest of the city and what what the rest of the taxpayers are paying for.
All right. Thank you for that. And so I just hope that that lands with folks who are viewing this. Please read the measures because you'll see literally them in their entirety, not the ballot arguments that you see in the voter's guide, but the measures themselves, which are available on the city's website. That's literally what would be adopted by the voters. So, all right. So next question we have here, does measure JK and L or do measures JK and L have a plan to support the community to our current standards if they were to pass? And I know that Mr. Rozell is here as well, who has done a number of or quite a few dives into the initiatives. Perhaps he can say if there is language in there that does speak to what is the plan if they pass?
I'm happy to respond to that. First, let's take them measure by measure. Measure J would eliminate all funding. So by definition, that does not have a plan to to provide CFD funding to support the River Park community. Measure K would reduce the max tax by half. And based on the current budget, that would result in a million dollar reduction in funding available to serve River Park. So that would not allow the CFD to be maintained to the current standard just because there is a million dollar loss. As to measure L, that's, that's a little more complicated. But when you consider ordinance number three oh four seven, which states, and I'm paraphrasing here, that if the residents of any special district, including a CFD, choose to eliminate or substantially reduce the funding for their special district, then the city council is prohibited from making up for that loss of funding. So based upon that ordinance right in conjunction with measure L, measure L would have the same impact as measure J, and there would not be funding available for those services. In addition, measure L indicates, as was mentioned earlier, that only, the only police officers that can provide services are on a straight time basis. And there is a prohibition against using overtime as chief Panida syndicated. That is not an availability. So that also means that there would be a loss of the additional patrols within River Park based upon the the very explicit language in measure L saying that police funding cannot be paid for with with overtime cost.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rozell. Next question on here, supporters of JK and L claim that we can repeal all or parts of the CFD and create a new CFD. It sounds very complicated. What does that process look like, including timeline, cost? Does our current services stay in place while this process is happening? I don't know if Mr. Rozell or Mr. Wolf or Mr. Nguyen would like to take that one.
Yep, I'm happy to to take a first crack at that one. Basically, and to be clear, measure JK and L do not repeal the CFD. They defund it either in whole or in part. So, so for example, with measure J, let's start with that, it would zero out the funding. So if the residents of River Park wish to return that funding, then it would require a vote of the people in order to create that funding, and that would take a two-thirds vote. For measure K, which cuts the max tax by half, that would also require a two-thirds vote in order to increase the 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 level of taxation back to a level that provides the services that the residents wish to have within River Park. And as it relates to measure L, I think the the big example that I referenced related to police funding, if the residents wish to return to allow police services paying overtime, that would also require a two-thirds vote. And between the time that the, if adopted, measure JK and L went into effect and to have another vote to allow some of those features to be put back in place, that would take a number of months, anywhere from six to twelve months and possibly longer. So there would be that time period where those services would not be provided.
Thank you. And in the end, all that work could happen and it would still be up to the voters where if it's two thirds, sixty-six percent of the vote, if it were sixty-five point seven, it still would not be adopted. Is that correct?
That that is correct.
Great. Thank you very much. I don't know if anyone else wanted to speak on the structure or the process for that. I think Mr. Rozell put it pretty well. Okay. Next question is actually related to that one, and it's a kind of processor structural question. And so maybe Anthony or someone from Public Works and the fiscal part of that might be able to help. If measure J passes to eliminate CFD five funding, does our CFD automatically get dismantled? And if dismantled, what happens to the reserve surplus of funds? And Mr. Rozell, if there's any part you'd like to add to that as well, for a period of time that passes before it comes into effect?
So happy to to respond first. So as I mentioned earlier, measure J does not dismantle the CFD, it merely defunds it, which means it still remains in place. And because it is not being dismantled, the, any surplus reserves which are left could be utilized to provide the services within CFD five until the money runs out.
Thank you. All right. This next question, if measure I were to pass, would there be a new tax implemented?
I'd say I'll take that Ken, I guess. No, and measure I does not implement any new tax.
And to follow up as well, it's very clear, based on the ballot question and the impartial analysis, that there is not a new tax which is adopted. It's merely the readoption of the the tax schedule that's has been in place since two thousand and five.
Wait, thank you very much. The next question, I believe you've answered it pretty clearly, Mr. Rozell regarding ordinance three zero four seven and how it comes into play with measures JK and L. And maybe Mr. Miller might speak just a little bit to some of these amenities that are covered solely by the CFD. So we have here examples such as parks, flood basins, medians, walking trails, bathrooms, trash pickup, et cetera. If you'd like to just elaborate a little bit on what that looks like that you know for sure is covered by the CFD, or we can share for sure is covered by the CFD.
Sure. So to speak a little specifically on this, the items that are funded by the general fund would remain funded by the general fund. So for example, your trash pickup that is not funded through the CFD, it's not affected by these items. Your park spaces and things like that that are funded exclusively through this the CFD. I I want to make it very clear, this is a statement that was made on on last Thursday during last Thursday's meeting as well, is that the CFD was formed as a part of this community when it was created. These park spaces, these medians, the the structures and items that the CFD funds would not exist at all without the creation of the CFD and the funding plan that it then therefore provides for the maintenance of these items. I would say that clearly, if you in 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 with the ordinance perspective here, these items, if the CFD were to not exist, the general fund would not be able to fund any of these things unless it were to rise to a health safety issue. And that could include things such as your park spaces, your median maintenance, the maintenance of your storm drain system. Although that has a complicating factor because of the city's MS four permit, there are items, for example, that would be considered a health or safety issue. But for example, your park restrooms would likely would not be able to be funded through the general fund.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so a couple of quick questions here on special districts operations, and I believe Mr. Miller, Mr. Hallit can speak to these. First one is, do renters pay into the CFD? If so, how will rents be affected if the tax goes away? Will rents go down?
I can take this one, and I can likely take all of these special district questions, I believe. The the renters do not pay directly into the CFD. Renters by definition are not property owners. Property owners are the only are the only parties who pay into the CFD.
Thank you. Would it be safe to say that some property owners may pass that cost along and the, you know, baked into the cost of rent for some of the renters?
I'd say that's likely. Yes.
Okay.
Well, but you raised the the opposite questions is, what's the likelihood that they would reduce the rent? And that goes back to the slide council member you covered about the monthly, the average monthly savings.
Yes, thank you.
For the property owner, not for the renter.
Yes, and I would say for any renters who are viewing this now or viewing this between now and the ballots being submitted. If that's a question you have, you can certainly email your your renter or excuse me, your landlord, you know, do it in writing, send them a letter or send an email saying if these initiatives were to pass, can you tell me would my rent be reduced and by how much? And then you'll get a letter in writing or an email in writing from your landlord on them. And if they'd like more information, you can share this video with them as well. All right. Thank you for that. Next, does the collection pay into CFD five two? Yes or no? I hear conflicting stories on this, and how much have they paid into the CFD to date?
So to the first question, the collection pays into the CFD. That is is not an item for debate. They are identified within the CFD areas and they pay the commercial rate on the special tax property classification. I do not have their their total, total contribution since two thousand and five. But just to give an example, in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, so last fiscal year, I selected a few properties within the collection area. And I may have missed a few APNs, so I apologize if this number is either a little low or inaccurate. But the twenty-three, twenty-four year, the collection area paid a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars or just over a hundred and three thirty-three thousand dollars in special taxes.
All right. Thank you for that. And you know, folks can look at that and do some of the math on just expanding that out year over year, knowing that we had the chart that shows the, you know, the assessments for the Melrose do fluctuate over time as well. All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. The next question we have here is, with continued development, will there be more contributors to CFD five? How do the apartments and commercial, how do apartments and commercial benefit from CFD five? How will my property value as a homeowner be impacted by the surrounding apartments and commercial businesses? I think there's a couple of layers to that question. My take on that is with continued development of apartments or commercial presences. with continued development of apartments or commercial presences uh, in the, within CFD five, um, they will also pay into the CFD. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. So apartment complexes are uh, under a different classification than commercial. I believe there's a multifamily rate in the uh, special tax table. Uh, that is uh, based on a um, I believe it's a square footage calculation. The, if there were new development in CFD five, the additional square footage is taxed at the appropriate rate within the classification. So if additional square footage is added anywhere in the CFD, uh, that actually will raise the overall tax revenue for the CFD. Or conversely, if the budget, for example, stays the same, everyone would then pay just a little bit less. To kind of go further on in the, the question here, if I remember it correctly, was how was my property value as a homeowner? Or so, excuse me, how is an apartment or commercial benefit from the CFD? Uh, the commercial areas in apartment complexes benefit in the exact same way that the homeowners do. Um, they benefit based on the uh, the improved uh, parkway and median spaces, the access to the park areas, the um, additional police uh, supplemental services. So any item within the CFD that it funds essentially applies to the entire district. Uh, and it is um, it's what makes the community a nice place to live.
Councilmember, I can just remind everyone, uh, not every single property pays the exact same amount. So it's all based on the um, the size of the property, not, not the actual um, price of the property. Anthony, is that correct?
That's correct. So a special tax cannot be levied on the value of the home or commercial property. It's based on, if, for example, in, in commercial, it's on a, uh, I think, I can't remember off the top of my head what the number is, but it's like forty-seven cents per square foot or something like that. And then for residential areas, it's based on the improved square footage of the uh, of the lot.
Great. Thank you for that. And I think that's an important point too, because um, I've heard a few points raised in a couple of comments about uh, some of the ballot language, or excuse me, the ballot arguments, um, saying that the um, the city can, in theory, going to the max tax could charge uh, charge you up to four thousand plus dollars um, per year for your uh, for your assessment. But if it's based on square footage, that's the maximum that people with the largest square footage uh, would be paying. People who are in smaller units or in townhomes or et cetera, which is a lot of the neighborhood. Um, is it safe to say they would uh, be, if we were hypothetically, ever go to max, that they would ever hit four thousand or hit that max that the largest square footage houses would have?
Uh, no, I, I can't tell you exactly what that top classification is, but if every single property within the CFD is split into a different class. So the classifications all have their independent maximum rates and these, the smallest classifications um, are uh, quite a bit less than the largest classifications.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on, um, we have a couple left in this particular section. Now this next one, um, it's from one of the attendees this evening. I pay a hundred and six dollars for River Park community and one seventy for waypoint per month. What do they cover in detail in comparison to the Melrose tax? So I assume those are HOA fees is what it sounds like. Um, and I, I don't know if Anthony wants to take that one.
Uh, sure. So I'm going to share my screen really quick with a, a maintenance map. And this is a very, this is effectively landscape maintenance for the most part. There are specific items within these colors that you're going to see uh, that include different things. So hold on just a moment, and I will attempt to zoom in on the actual waypoint neighborhood. Um, waypoint is a uh, sub HOA. And let me zoom in here a little bit, excuse me. Uh, this is a representation of the entire area. So waypoint here, a good example is, is this, is this area here? Um, and I do not remember off the top of my head if there are sections above here or not. But for example, your sub HOA is going to likely maintain everything within your sub HOA community area. So these small spaces in front of your homes perhaps, or uh, behind the garages within these alleyways. Back here, there are small green spaces. There are some trees that they may maintain. And then I'm not sure if what you're referring to there with the River Park HOA is what would be considered the master developer service area or the master HOA. Those are two separate things. And those are, those are represented by different uh, different colors. So the master HOA, and this map is available. I can share this map with anybody who would like to see it. Your master HOA is going to be the salmon color and your master developer service area is its green color. Uh, your master HOA cares for things like certain parkways along uh, side, in front of homes, but uh, um, or alongside certain roads. And your master DSA is the green areas in front of some of the uh, some of the other houses uh, and common areas within certain areas. This map was put together as a part of the community when it was being constructed. And that's what your HOA covers is specific landscape areas for the most part, specific landscape areas within these areas. And then other services, like for example, you're, from what I've heard, there is a small security detail to the HOA sponsors.
Great. Thank you. And um, just to speak to the Melrose in general, uh, the CFD covers the things that you may recall from the slide we had that had all of the squares and icons and the um, level of funding for the current fiscal year um, in their operating budget. That's what the um, CFD covers. And then the things that uh, Mr. Miller referred to are things that are typically covered by the HOA. And along those slides, I will share that there has been discussion, um, I believe from the proponents at public meetings, uh, where it was asked, well, uh, perhaps the fountain, for example, you know, could the HOA take that over? Or could the HOA take over the parks? So we deed the parks over to uh, the HOA if uh, these measures were to pass. And um, I'll just say that uh, speak to the HOA, ask them what their thoughts are on that. I don't know if they have the mechanism or the capacity to take those on, but I do know in conversations with River Park residents, um, there it has been uh, some dissatisfaction with the level of service they've been receiving from the HOA on things like landscaping behind their homes, just in the alley, um, or the length of time it takes to get a tree trimmed or irrigation fixed. And so if that's the case, uh, if the HOAs um, are a little challenged in having even those items taken care of, uh, you know, what is their capacity to take on an entire park or seven parks or the fountain? Um, so if you're happy with your HOA and their performance, that's one thing. I have to say in my experience talking with some River Park residents, that hasn't always been the case. So take that into consideration as well for what it's worth. All right. Uh, the next one, um, people from all over the city use the ball fields at the schools. Why is only River Park made to pay the city's portion of their maintenance and not everyone citywide?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll field that initially and see if anyone else wants to chime in. It just goes back to um, what I stated a, a few times already. It's because it's a Melrose neighborhood. The Melrose was set up to construct those fields and, and the rest of the parks and also to maintain them. Um, the fact that they're open to the public uh, just has to do with the fact that we have public spaces. So from that perspective, they're not private um, amenities, those public areas. I don't know if anyone else from public works wants to chime in?
I can add one more thing to the end of that question and, and primarily, um, there isn't a, a portion of that question that states, what's the city's portion of maintenance? Well, that is what you just mentioned, Alex. The city's portion of maintenance is the Melrose portion. There is no portion that the general fund pays to maintain this section because this is a Melrose district.
Great. Thank you. We are at about uh, eleven minutes remaining in the time that we have scheduled, and we have just a couple questions remaining in these other sections, and I think we'll be able to get through them. But just as a last call for folks who have questions that haven't been answered yet, please feel free to use the Q and A function. Uh, the next portion here, uh, thank you again, Mr. Miller, um, and the city manager and Mr. Rizel for the um, operations portion. Now we're going to go into police operations. I know our chief has touched on this already. If there's anything else you'd like to elaborate on uh, for each of these questions, you know, this is where we can do that. Uh, how do you anticipate JK and L will affect public safety in our community? And can you provide specific examples of how the loss of funding or resources might impact emergency services?
Um, well, I think I pretty much covered that on my final slide. It's very clearly bulleted out there. Reduction in services, reduction of police presence in that beat, uh, reduction of availability to respond for calls for service would certainly result in increased uh, response times as well as decreased ability to apply problem solving resources.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, the next question was submitted this evening. Um, it has to do with uh, some of the police services um, and kind of level of crime, but you did speak a little bit to the types of crimes or the types of call for service we see in River Park. Due to the crime and disruptive behavior by people uh, from Ventura and Camrio, oh, excuse me. Uh, people from Ventura and Camrio are hesitant to visit the collection, which is unfortunate considering the potential for businesses to thrive. At Target, it's impossible to avoid witnessing groups of teenagers stealing and vandalizing packages. They narrowly dodge vehicles or riding the bikes. Why isn't anyone taking care of this? And perhaps, perhaps chief, you'd like to speak to some of the um, some of the items that PD has uh, taken on collaboratively with security at the collection as well as um, how our uh, services have been looked at with enhanced services throughout the neighborhood to address some of these issues that have come up.
Um, yeah, certainly. Um, if you wouldn't mind also going to slide twenty-three, which was the heat map for July of this year, um, while I explain that. Um, the, the question said here is that there, the number of thefts are excessive. Um, I can say that, you know, we do have thefts in retail centers. Um, that is a natural occurrence when you have a large retail center. Now, referring to the areas in the surrounding neighborhood, um, you can see that the nature of the problems is not is really extensive as, as uh, one might think. There are some, the crimes that do take place are primarily property crime related. I think in the, in the July update, there were a couple of stolen vehicles, but the other ones were property crimes. But relatively, as slide twenty-five points out, is that River Park is average. It is not one of those crime ridden communities. So I will point out, when you look at slide twenty-five, if you go to um, the slide with the citywide map, you'll see that, go to twenty-five, yeah, you'll see that really, like I said, we are not one of those communities that have, but go back one slide. Twenty, then we missed, there you go. Um, on this particular slide is, you can see that um, it's an average community. It's not, it's not a crime ridden community. The problems that River Park has are, are um, not the same as other parts of the city. To the point about the collection, I've uh, some comments about um, uh, groups of teenagers stealing and vandalizing packages, dodging vehicles while riding their bikes. I, I will tell uh, anybody that is uh, watching this is that that has been kind of a citywide problem that's been trending out for the past year or two. It actually seems to be kind of tapering down a little bit. But this is dealing with large bikes, groups of organized youth on bicycles. Uh, we do have had, we have had these problems in other areas. The collection does tend to be a, a focal point during certain times of the year. And we do apply resources towards them when we are aware that they're going to gather. So um, we have been working with the collection to um, implement uh, no bicycle, uh, no bicycling on the property, which has had some impact on this, as well as working with the security um, at the collection to help address these problems. So um, overall, I, I'll just say that um, you know, I don't believe that uh, there is a huge excessive uh, theft problem in River Park. But I will also say that having additional resources there helps deter that. So the question is to the, the person asking the question is, having less of those resources does not lend towards solving the problem.
Great. Thank you, chief. And um, I will just say real quickly, prior to going to the next question, I had my uh, council member event uh, at the um, outside the annex at the collection just this past month as I do every summer. And while I was there, some uh, a group of teenagers did come through on bikes. And uh, that evening, there was also the concert happening there. And it just turned out that Corporal Martin happened to be, you know, there um, talking with uh, some of the security and another officer, and they saw the teenagers go by in the bikes. And they went and engaged with them, but that context, um, they were just, you know, a few feet away from me. I could, you know, overhear the conversation uh, to see them interact with the teenagers and have a dialogue with them versus being incredibly punitive or um, you know, just trying to chase them out of there. I think that dialogue was very impressive to see, and I have to commend Corporal Martin and the security from the collection for how they handled that situation. You just provided them that, you know, they're welcome to be there. Everybody's there to have a good time, but they are expected to walk their bikes, which they did do, and they were respectful about it. So, um, all right. Uh, next question, chief, regarding the overtime, uh, if there are no signups for a given shift, um, just hypothetically, if there were no signups for a shift for overtime in CFD five, is the CFD still charged for that?
No, um, the money is simply not spent. Um, but to that point, that has been brought up by some of the neighbors, the residents in that neighborhood about this issue. And I can tell you that we fill about eighty to eighty-five percent of the posted shifts. And these aren't first responder shifts. If, if it's not absolutely critical, if it doesn't get filled, we can fill it somewhere else. Um, so it's, I don't see that as actually like a, a very significant issue.
Thank you very much. All right. So we're winding down here in the last few minutes. We have a couple of general questions here. Uh, this next question, I believe uh, either Mr. Hallett or Mr. Wolf can take this from Public Works. Um, earlier, I believe Anthony spoke to generally the average lifespan of playground equipment. Be about fifteen years that you'd be looking at. Um, I know there's variables to that, as Mr. Hallett mentioned in the past, such as how close you are to the ocean or some other factors. But uh, now that we know that there is uh, definitely usable service life to playground equipment, can either of you speak to um, how long does it typically take? Or what are the variables involved in replacing playground equipment in a CFD versus replacing playground equipment in the general fund?
I'll, I'll take that one. So basically, this is where there's an advantage for a CFD because you are not competing with other general fund dollars. So you don't have to, it, it's not part of the CIP process directly where city council has to juggle other priorities, such as deferred maintenance and infrastructure and roads. This is something that a CFD can say, okay, we've met with um, our special district staff. We're ready to replace this playground. This is the playground we've selected. And so that could be put out to bid and replaced accordingly. Whereas if you are not a special district and you're a general fund, then you're competing priorities with everybody else. And so in that case, all of our general fund playgrounds are ranked accordingly from worst to best, and we're always going to replace the worst one first. So that's how our priorities are.
And councilmember, try if I can add, add to that for a sec, just because I think the context is even bigger than that because um, we do have a large CIP as a whole, and it's not just about uh, parks and playgrounds. Uh, as, as Steve mentioned, it's general fund funds a lot of other things, traffic signal controllers and street widens and paving, sidewalk repair, those kinds of things. And so it's, it's not, you know, the CFD dollars get to be held within the CFD and competed against each other internally to the CFD. But when you're talking about the city as a whole, now you're opening up all kinds of different projects and not necessarily park projects that are competing. And if you actually look at our CIP, we not only have quite a bit of funded projects, but have quite a bit of unfunded projects. If you look at the back of that CIP book, and those ones also are, would be competing against, you know, any of these um, parks projects that would be competing for general fund. So just contextually, it's actually a much bigger conversation um, about how we prioritize capital projects. And we even have some capital projects that are funded, but just don't have the staff of resources available. And so uh, it just takes us some time to get, get to those projects.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Wolf. And I actually have a visual for that, that I shared at the in-person meeting. This is actually our CIP uh, project uh, book or binder. And you can see, these are all of the um, the uh, capital improvement projects that we have currently in Oxnard. I apologize, my background makes it a little difficult, but it is literally a binder. And I did ask uh, Mr. Miller to provide the capital projects that we've talked about earlier just for CFD five. And it's a couple of pages long. It's seven pages and it actually, one page per project. And so um, these are the projects just for your neighborhood that the CFD uh, would be covering. Whereas um, if they were, had to compete with this entire binder, you can see how there would have to be prioritization of um, what gets to come first when it comes to uh, implementation funding. So. All right. So we're almost at time. I do want to just cover um, a couple more questions that came in here. We have one here, just we have one here just regarding the uh, the uh, the budget itself for the CFD. Is there a place to go look at exactly all monies being used, broken down line by line? And I think uh Mr. Miller might be able to answer that.
I don't know if the OpenGov uh city budget software breaks it down specifically. I, doesn't, I don't believe it itemizes line by line. Um, but that's something that my team is, our special district staff can work with any member of the public on. Um, during the actual budget process, we actually do break out an itemized budget for the community to discuss. So that's how we present it uh during the budget creation process. Um, the numbers you saw on your presentation tonight were what, what would be represented by those line items. And then I will say furthermore, what we're planning on doing, um, just within special districts, we're planning on um going and visiting with communities across the city, actually, all special districts to uh explore uh, but periodic um budget updates where we can kind of go through to say, okay, what's been done, how much has been spent and so on and so forth. So uh, keep an eye out for, for something like that coming from your neighborhood council or coming from myself. Um, we'll be looking to do that on a regular, on a periodic basis. But if you don't want to wait for that, uh, by all means, I can always reach out directly. So if you want to uh send me an email, I am always able to respond that way as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, so I do want to thank everybody again for your time. I know we didn't get to every single question, the ones that were relevant to the CFD five and ballot measure discussion. We will um post the follow-up to those. I am going to paste the um, the uh email addresses here for us. My apologies, I left out the chief, I just realized. If you wouldn't mind typing in your email real quick there, chief, just for you. And while you're doing that, there is one last question that came in, and is the reason I wanted to put the email addresses there. There was a question around uh, why do the non-Melrose uh areas of the city look better than um, or are maintained in better shape? Um, I would invite that uh person who asked that question, please email me. Happy to sit down with you and even take a tour of some of the other areas that are general fund funded. Um, so we can look at just some of the many layers and factors that play into how other areas outside of special districts are managed. And then we can look at um how the special district is managed as well and maintained. So again, thank you all very much. Thank you to our presenters this evening, uh, Mr. Miller, Mr. Nguyen, and Chief Benitez. Thank you again to Mr. Rozell, Mr. Wolf, and uh Mr. Hallett for their um participation and their support this evening as well. And lastly, all of the staff who um helped with this, I hope everybody here recognizes that there's a lot of work that put in, was put into getting this information out for you tonight. Please take this for what it's worth. It's meant to be just informational, and you can uh have it as a consideration moving forward when you're considering your ballots. Thank you very much. I hope everybody has a great evening. Take care.